Here we go. We have one associate.
Can we call the meeting to order, please, if we could all rise to salute the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements, there's just a couple. Building permits are available online through the fire department. If anybody needs a building permit, they can do that online.
Burning permits.
Burning permits. Did I say building? Burning, thank you. This is from Sharon White, the Board of Health. The Abington Public Schools textile recycling program. Your old clothes, shoes, and household linens are too good for the trash. Donate to the white bins located outside of each school in town. The PTOs receive a rebate of $100 per ton, and it helps to keep the trash tipping fees down in town. And the annual town election is coming up, April 27th. Nomination papers are available at the town clerk's office. Nomination papers must be returned to the board of registrars by 5:00 PM on Monday, March 11th. And the town clerk's office will be open for voter registration until 8:00 PM on Tuesday, March 12th, which will be the last day to register to vote, register to vote to be eligible for the April 1st annual town meeting and the April 27th annual town election. Does anybody else have any announcements? No? First item on the agenda was a 6:30 PM reappointment to Tri-Town Development Corporation, but that's going to be put off until our next meeting. 6:35 PM, which it is 6:35 PM, is a request to reclaim property foreclosed by the town at 700 Brockton Avenue, doing business as Irene's bridal shop, Linda Ahern. John?
Mr. Chairman, from what I understand, this process has only been allowed or where it has come to the board's attention to do something like this twice before. And one time, the board voted to allow the owner to reclaim. And in another case, the town denied the owner to reclaim. That denial was appealed to the state, and the property owner was allowed to reclaim the property. So my recommendation is if the individuals meet the standard that you set forth tonight and how they should pay and the manner in which they should pay, I would recommend you allow them to reclaim the property.
And do you have a recommendation on how they will be repaying?
Well, I think that that is something that Leo can discuss with the committee.
Leo, can you come up, please? Thanks. Good evening.
Thank you. Leo Provost, Treasurer/Collector. This particular property was behind on taxes. We did begin a case, it was actually a foreclosure case that started just about two years ago. After about a year, we had discussions, and they agreed to put the property up for sale. So we held off on our case for a nine-month period. There was no activity, no communication, no discussions. So I sent a letter to them, certified letter, letting them know that we're once again beginning the foreclosure case. And in early January, the land court judge actually made the decision, and it's now town property. I do, I'm here for, well, I'm here for the open meeting law, but I also am here for this, and I have two points that I'd like to make. The first one is that I would be in full agreement if the board decided to give this property back to the owner so long as they could make payment in a reasonable amount of time. That's probably, say, 35 to 40 days, 45 days perhaps. The other point is that because it's town-owned property, our tax title custodian has advised us that we should actually, if we're going to allow them to remain on the property, it's a business property and a rental apartment, that we should actually execute an agreement with them, a lease and occupancy agreement with them to protect the town. So if the decision was made to let them reclaim the property, I'd like it to include the execution of such an agreement. Now, to add a little bit more to it, the fact remains that if you were to, for some reason, decide that you did not want them or would not let them reclaim this property, they still have a 12-month period to go in front of the land court judge and ask for his permission or their permission to actually reclaim. So I think that the smartest and best thing for all concerned would be to let them do this. You know, our job is to collect the taxes and the other amounts that are owed to the town. It's not to really inflict any more pain and suffering on someone than we need to. Any further questions?
Questions?
Leo, do they have a pending sale that's in the process?
Yes, they do.
Have they got a purchase and sale?
That's exactly where, why, and how they expect to generate the revenue to pay us off.
Okay.
Is there a purchase and sale agreement that they've executed?
There is, but that's a little sticky because we're the actual owner of it.
Right.
But, you know, our unwinding of this process, I would obviously let the lawyers figure out how that works, but it would be that we would be paid off in a certified bank check before we release our rights to the property, withdraw our case, and withdraw our taking on the property. And then they, the lawyers would have to figure out the rest of how they properly convey this to the purchaser.
John?
Leo, do we have any idea what the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale are? Will it close in 60 days?
I understand it's supposed to close, if all goes well, at the beginning of March. That's why I say perhaps, you know, a 40, 45-day window.
What's the amount due?
It's about $58,000.
How many years?
2004, I think, is.
And that's inclusive of interest?
Oh, yes. Depending upon, well, it's a little over $58,000, but it's within $58,000, $59,000, right around that ballpark.
Any other questions?
Just $58,000 would be paid for sure. I would have a lien against them if, in fact, it went through the purchase and sales and the sale went through.
Well, right now, we own the property.
Okay, so we'd be paid for it. I thought we were going to.
The only way that we would release the property is if we were paid in full in a certified check.
Okay.
So we would have our money before we turn back title of the property.
Okay.
And withdraw the case and the actual taking.
Leo?
Yes.
Would we release the money to the new owner? I mean, release the property to the new owner, or would we release it to?
We would give it back to the owner. The owner is the one who's reclaiming the property.
Well, we own.
Asking for, the previous owner, the party that owned it before we took it, is asking for permission to reclaim their property.
And then they would continue that transaction.
They would then be the ones to convey it to the new buyer.
And the tax lien would stay on the property until such time as it was paid off, which would be paid off at the closing, I would think.
Well, it would all be removed at the same time. We're not going to give up title to the property or withdraw our case in land court until we're paid.
We're paid.
So once we're paid, we also withdraw our original taking by issuing a redemption.
Okay.
And I do have a document here that came across about 5:30 tonight from our tax title custodian as to their suggestion on this agreement to.
The use in occupancy.
The use in occupancy agreement, yeah. I can leave copies with each of you if you'd like.
I have some concerns about leasing town property, you know, particularly within this period of time. If something should happen, the roof should cave in or something.
The agreement kind of spells all that out. It also requires them to carry insurance on the property.
Who makes those repairs?
The insurance that would be on the property.
No, no, I mean, if something should happen to the property where there needed to be some repair, would that repair, financial responsibility be the town's, or would it be whose? I mean, we own it.
The town owns it. If something were to happen, if the roof were to cave in, it's on us right now. If this agreement were executed, this agreement requires the carrying of certain liability insurance and things of that nature, so then you'd actually be able to go to that insurance company for recovery.
If we.
If not, the town will have to insure it.
Is the building occupied now?
Yes, it is, because they haven't actually vacated yet. There's been a letter, a certified letter sent to them to vacate. But given the short timeframe of all this that might transpire, that we certainly hope will transpire.
We don't make good landlords as a municipality.
Kevin?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to reclaim the property subject to a satisfactory agreement that satisfies the town treasurer and council.
Technically, it's the tax title custodian in this case.
Which is you.
Yes, it is.
There you go.
Do you want to put a time limit on it, Kevin?
In a form acceptable to him, so he can put the timeframe on it.
Are you comfortable with that as far as?
Sure.
There's a motion and a second. And can you give us a report back maybe in, you know, a month, just to let us know where things stand?
I hope in a month this is not ours anymore.
Exactly. Okay, so motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Thanks, Leo.
Thank you.
Let's see. I'm going to go out of order here. We can do the approval for the Abington Little League Annual Parade, Saturday, April 29th, 2013, 11:00 AM. Is anybody here from Abington Little League? Okay. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Also under action discussion items, vote to authorize deficit spending in the snow and ice account.
Mr. Chairman, we are obviously going to approach a deficit position with the snow and ice account. We're waiting on reports now. We may have another storm or so before we get there, but I don't want to be in a situation where we didn't have the authorization to spend. Actually, in a town manager form of government, it requires a vote of the finance committee with a recommendation by the town manager, but I wanted the board to weigh in on it as well.
We have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll go back to the public appointments, 6:40 PM. Our appointments to the Conservation Commission. We have four full-time, well, full-time appointments. Two that the term ends in 2013, one term ends in 2014, one term ends in 2015. We also had an associate member, and that term ends in 2015. I believe we have 11 applicants. Kathy Creighton, Jim Dombrowski, Russ Forsyth, Brian Hailstone, Terry Hailstone, Donna Hoffman, I think that's Jerry Kelleher, Michael Noonan, Bill Stone, Clifton Jacob, and Joseph Feeney. So I'm going to see if who's here and who's not, and anybody who wants to come up and just give a brief, introduce themselves to the board if they're here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I think there might be one name left off there, because I received an email over the weekend that James Tormy.
Well, he doesn't.
Oh, I thought I received an email saying.
He did, but I talked to him this evening. He's fine.
What's that?
There was, there was one receipt.
We missed something?
No, no, you didn't miss it, no. It was over the weekend, I think, Jim Tormy had sent in.
Right. Okay, but he withdrew it?
Yep, according to Mike, I guess. Okay, so we're going to go just how they listed here. Kathy Creighton, is Kathy here? Hi, Kathy, if you want to just come up briefly and introduce yourself. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Kathy Creighton. I am an Abington resident since my husband and I moved here, and we've raised our family here. And I'm a homeowner, don't own any property in town, except for my house. The bank owns some of that. I am interested in giving a hand on the Conservation Commission. In the past, I served on the Conservation Commission for about 10 years. I'm a little rusty, but I would like to come up to speed and give you guys a hand reconstituting the Conservation Commission. I work as an environmental professional, and although I don't specifically do wetlands work, for my job, I think my knowledge of the regulations in the environmental field would be very helpful with this position. And as far as what I'd like to see happen on the board is, one, the first thing is education, making sure everybody's up to speed. Whether or not I get appointed, I wanted to point out that there is a MAC convention in the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners on March 2nd, and it would be very valuable if the Conservation Commission members get to go to that. Usually, there's money in the budget for it, so I would suggest that we send people if we can. Secondly, there's a circuit rider program for the wetlands program, and I would suggest that we try to invite DEP up to give us a hand getting caught up, getting seven people up to speed, or I guess five. There's a lot of people to educate at one time with a lot of important decisions ahead of them. And also, I'd like to take another look at the fee structure to try to figure out if there's anything we can do there to bring in some funds. And long-term, I'd like to take a look at some way to bring in some consultant help, whether we get it through fees or some other method. But part-time, I don't think it's a lot of consultant help, but I think it would be helpful. But do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Do you have a preference on which?
I would prefer a full member. I don't really care which term.
Full member, but there's, as far as the terms ending 2013, 2014, 2015.
Doesn't much matter to me. Whatever you guys would prefer.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Next was Jim Dombrowski. Jim, I saw Jim. Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Dombrowski, 28 Temple Street, longtime resident of the town of Abington, former member of the Conservation Commission. I've served on another board, such as the Open Space Committee, Growth Management, and even the first Griffins Dairy Study Committee. I've served as conservation officer in adjacent town, which my responsibilities was the administration and enforcement of the Wetlands Protection Act, which with all the recent vacancies, the new board is definitely going to need some education, and I'd be instrumental in helping that. Whether I'm appointed or not, I'll still be a part of it and assist in bringing the new transition to these members, which is greatly needed. I'd send an email to the members of the board pertaining to providing these members with a copy of the CMR regulations and also the handbook, the environmental handbook from MACC. Both of those things are vital tools for anyone on the Conservation Commission to learn the responsibilities. I've been said to be very vocal on wetlands issues. Well, in order to stand out and speak for the wetlands, you got to understand the values. Understand you're speaking for something that doesn't have a voice. You're speaking for the protection of public and private water supplies, prevention of pollution, groundwater supplies, flood control, fisheries, and wildlife habitat. It's not just wetlands you're protecting, you're protecting the values. So understand that when you turn around and you say someone's just out to protect the wetlands. There's a lot of value there that these people need to understand. But the regulations alone are something that they have to be brought to speed with in a rather quick period of time.
Great. Any questions?
As I said, whether I'm appointed or not, I'm still going to be involved to help them with the transition. So whether it's a short period that I'm appointed to or a long period, it makes no difference.
Do you have a preference, Jim?
Makes no difference to me.
Great. Thank you. Russ Forsyth?
Russ Forsyth, 86 Colonel Hunt Drive in Abington. When the reports first came out in the paper that they needed assistance on the commission, I figured I'd sign in and have no previous help with any part of this. Haven't done anything. It'd be the first time I have, but be welcome to be either part of it or even an alternate if necessary.
Great.
That's about it.
Any questions? Do you have a preference as far as?
None at all.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Hailstone? Terry Hailstone? Donna Hoffman? Was she the?
She couldn't.
You informed her she's couldn't be here.
She couldn't be here tonight.
She's working till eight.
Jerry Kelleher? I saw Jerry.
My name is Jerry Kelleher. I live at 327 Woodlands Way. I've been a resident of Abington my, almost my entire life. My dad moved here when I was one year old, and I have the time to put into the Conservation Commission. I'm semi-retired. Young, over the years, I've dealt with the conservation. I've seen it, and I know the land in Abington, and I'm willing to put the time in to learn the things that have to be learned for the conservation to help the town.
Questions? No? Do you have a preference on which?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Michael Noonan?
I've been a resident. Good evening. I've been a resident since 1985. I've never done anything with the town as far as, but speak out, so I figure it's time to maybe help out a little bit with the town. My experience would be that I have a landscape company. I deal with conservation agents all the time in other towns, and I know what each town, not each town, but a number of different towns request, what they want. And I also would like to be on the other side of it and having faced the board to try to make the process as easy as possible for an applicant. A lot of times, you go in there and you're just having the fear of God to have somebody say no. And I think it should just be as easy as the process as possible, that being help the people. And if there are issues, show them what the issues are and let them figure out how to deal with them. And I think that's what the town should be doing. So, and I don't have a preference to anyone.
You don't? Questions? Anybody? Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's worth mentioning for the public, though. We have their applications.
Yes.
And have had them, and they've delineated what their backgrounds are. So the reason there's no questions, at least from me, is that I've had the chance to look over the applications.
Thanks, Kevin. Bill Stone? Let's see, Bill? Clifton Jacob? I think we had noticed that he was.
Make it in.
Back problems.
Yes.
Joseph Feeney? Mr. Feeney? Evening.
Evening. My name is Joseph Feeney. I live at 527 Woodlands Way. I've been a resident of Abington since 1995. I've served on the Boosters as president of Boosters. I've served with Abington Youth Football as president of their organization for probably about four years. I work for, as a clerk, I work for a nonprofit development company in Boston, so I deal with architects and construction and all the background that goes along with that. I've dealt with conservation commissions before, Boston Redevelopment Authority, so my background is in the construction industry, so.
Great.
Any questions?
Questions? Anyone? Do you have any, again, any preference as to what?
A full member, a full member would probably be.
Full member, but as far as the term?
Term? Yeah, nothing.
Doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your consideration.
Okay. I think that's everybody, right? I just want to thank every, that's, I mean, to have 11 people from the town put their names in, I think, is a tremendous thing, and I thank each and every one of you for doing that. Obviously, we can't appoint all of you, but for those who don't get appointed, I would hope that you stay involved. There are other committees that you could become involved in throughout the town, and we certainly need your help, and we appreciate your interest. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, generally, to make it easier for process, I would move that we put all the names in nomination, and then we can, as you call off each name, we can then vote however we wish to do so.
Just one, and I agree with that, Kevin, but how do you vote the different lengths of office?
Well, I think you just take it as, with the 2013 expiring first, there are two positions, then move down to 14 and 15, and whoever, whoever gets the most votes, you know, for their particular positions, I would suggest. I mean, it's entirely up to hand.
I think you have to vote on each particular position. You can't just throw everybody in there and then we decide after the fact where they're going to go.
I don't know. I agree with that. I was just wondering if it wasn't more appropriate to nominate each person for a given term like that, or then you're going to vote everybody in there, you're going to, how are you going to?
Well, you could nominate, I guess you could nominate each one for each term.
That's the only confusion I have, is how do you, how do you get there?
Well, I think if everybody's name is nomination.
Correct.
You take the first, we're going to call the first one to fill. We have two positions for 2013. We're going to fill one position for 2013. Pick out, and I think everybody indicated they didn't care one way or the other, which, where they did, so then let's just match right down from there, if that's all right.
Yeah.
It'll work.
You're right. I'd go backwards. Just to leave it there.
Okay, so there's a motion to place all names in nomination.
A second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that means all names are in nomination. So we'll take up one, the first 2013 position. So I guess just read off the names, is that?
Yeah, I think you just read each one of them off and.
Whoever gets them.
Let us vote, whoever gets three votes gets chosen.
Mr. Chairman, just one thought. You also have, these are the ones that have a term. The others, I would imagine, are just appointed for an indefinite term as alternates?
Well, the alternate had a term also through 2015, yeah.
Is the alternate a real position? I mean, or can they have as many alternates, or how does that work, you know?
It's an associate position.
It's an associate, yeah, it's not an alternate position. It's an associate. They don't have any voting rights.
And that's basically kind of.
Just there to observe.
And it's, but they can't vote, but they'll be next in line if they get a preference.
Possibly, it doesn't, nothing.
Are there any associates on there now?
There was.
There was.
There was. They resigned too?
They resigned also.
Okay.
So you're going to read off the names, and how many votes do we have when you're reading this list of names you vote?
We've got four, four regular and one associate.
So we can vote five times?
Well, we're going to do each position, right? So if we're going to do.
I don't know. That's what I'm trying to get to.
I know, well, it's.
I guess in your own mind, pick out four people that you want. When we come to their name, when he calls their name, if that isn't one of your people, then you don't vote for them.
Okay, now that's fine.
But if somebody gets three votes, then they get their position.
Should we do 2015 first, because that's more, I mean.
That's, if you want to go backwards, I don't care.
Sure.
So you have a total of five votes?
If we want to have.
If we want to have an associate.
If we have an associate.
Right, if you do the associate.
All right, so why don't we do the full member for 2015? All those in favor of Kathy Creighton?
Aye.
Aye. That's two.
No, wait a minute now. So I'm, I would like to have somebody else in 2015, not necessarily against Kathy for serving on the board, so is that what you just did?
Well, I don't think there's any other way to do it, right? You got to do, appointing somebody to a 2015 position.[1706.88] You gotta do, appointing somebody to a two thousand and fifteen position.
My, yeah.
I think we should pick four and drum out of the hat, and this is a two thousand and fifteen, this is a two thousand and fourteen, seriously.
Would it be helpful if I call them off? Do you have any suggestions Lauren?
Chairman, I think this is difficult because you have so many offices that you're dealing with at one time. I think the one possibility is to just choose the four people that you want to serve. And then once you've chosen four people to serve, then go through and try and allocate them to different
Positions?
That might make it a little more similar.
That's fine.
And then go back and choose the alternate or associate if you're interested.
All right, why don't we do it that way?
I knew you came here for that.
All right, so we'll start over. We're gonna read out each name, you get four votes. And then we'll go back and choose the alternate. Don't, anybody vote for more than four people, or else you're really gonna mess things up. Okay, so we have Kathy Creighton. That's three. Jim Dombrowski. Russ Forsyth. Two. Brian Hailstone. Terry Hailstone. Donna Hoffman. That was one. Jerry Kelleher. That's two. Michael Noonan. That's two. Bill Stone. That's three. Clifton Jacob. Joseph Feeney. That's four. Okay, so we have?
How many times do they vote? Does it add up to sixteen? Anybody watching me?
So you have three now.
We have three now, we have Kathy Creighton, Bill Stone, Joseph Feeney. And then we had?
We had one alternate.
But you still have one.
We still have one to fill. So we had Jerry Kelleher, who received two votes, and Michael Noonan received two votes. So I guess we could go back and do them again?
You could have a runoff?
Yeah.
Between those two?
Or you could decide not to fill that position now and leave that till a different night.
It's better to fill them.
Yeah, I think we need to fill them.
Yeah.
You want to have a runoff between the two that get the two votes?
Yeah, Russ had two, you know.
Even, rusted two.
Oh, Russ Forsyth had two?
Yep.
Okay, so we have three people with two votes. You want to do a runoff with those three people?
How does that work?
We'd go vote on all three of them again and see how, if anybody got three votes?
Well, is?
Yeah, we could do it that way.
Is that all right?
Try it.
Okay. We have Russ Forsyth. That's two. So you and I can't vote again that way. Jerry Kelleher. That's one. Michael Noonan. That's one. Oh, we did this before when we had appointments, we can go through it one more time and see what we do, what happens. We'll read them again and see if there's any change. Russ Forsyth? Two. That's not gonna happen, right?
Well, how about, why don't we do the?
Alternate?
Associate.
Associate, I keep calling it, yes, okay, we'll do the associate, that's a good idea, okay.
Yeah, do the associate first.
Okay.
How many positions do we have on?
You have two?
We have two, we have an associate and a regular member.
Right, just make two associates. We can do that, right?
Well, wait, you have Kathy Creighton with three votes.
Yeah, those are all set, we have Kathy Creighton, those, Kathy Creighton, Bill Stone, Joe Feeney, they're all set.
You have your three people.
We need four.
We need four. There's four vacancies. So let's do the, let's do the
Let's do the associate first, yeah.
So, we're gonna go back and read everybody's name who doesn't have an appointment, right? So as an associate, Jim Dombrowski. Russ Forsyth? He said he'd taken an associate's spot, so.
He did?
Yeah. Okay, so that's three for Russ. That's, that gets it there, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, let me ask you the question, does, what, in terms of an associate, is there any? What does the bylaw say, is it one associate or two, or as many as you want?
Yeah.
Many as you want? You did, okay. All right.
So you want to go back and do a runoff between the?
Well, let me, here's what I would suggest then. Of the, Russ Forsyth is just appointed as the associate, so you've got Jim Kelleher and Michael Noonan.
Correct. Jerry Kelleher.
Jerry Kelleher, I meant. Pick, yeah, one per associate, one for a regular member then.
Okay, so let's do, let's do the regular member. Jerry Kelleher. Okay, that's three, so Jerry's gonna be the regular member. And then for an associate, Mike, Michael Noonan? Okay. That's everybody.
It wasn't as easy as you thought it was, but it wasn't as hard as you thought it was.
Again, thanks to everybody who applied.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Chairman, sorry, terms?
Oh, right.
Oh, yes, 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 okay. Thank you, Lauren. So we have two for two thousand and thirteen, one for two thousand and fourteen, and one whose term ends in two thousand and fifteen.
And one associate for two thousand and fifteen.
One associate for two thousand and fifteen, and then I would say the other two associates, their terms are three-year terms, so they would start this year and go through two thousand and sixteen, right?
Yeah.
One year on associate, please put it in your handbook.
Is it? Thanks Jim. If that's what it is, then that's what it is.
There is no such position as an associate under the Conservation Act.
We'll check out on what the term is, but he may, I think Jim may be correct on the one year, okay. All right, so how do you want to divide these up?
Move on them the same way you did before, I would think. They go from fifteen, fourteen, and then
Okay.
Elimination, the last two would be thirteen.
All right, so we have four, Kathy Creighton. Jerry Kelleher. Bill Stone. And Joe Feeney, right? Okay, so for the two thousand and fifteen, we'll start, Kathy Creighton for the two thousand and fifteen. Jerry Kelleher for the two thousand and fifteen. Bill Stone for the two thousand and fifteen, I'd go with Bill. Joe Feeney for the two thousand and fifteen. So it's two, one, one. Do you need a majority for that, do you think, or?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that you get the majority.
Yeah.
All right. Want to go through it again?
Just, at the stage.
I'll let, then, Bill Stone got three votes, I mean, two votes, you want to say, Bill Stone, okay, so Bill Stone?
I'll change my vote to Bill Stone.
Bill Stone has a two thousand and fifteen term. Two thousand and fourteen term, Kathy Creighton?
Sure.
Okay. And then the other two, Jerry and Joe, are the two thousand and thirteen terms.
And the associate?
Is Russ.
The associates, Russ and Michael Noonan.
Yep.
Right?
So one of the, one of the associates is fifteen, and then the other is sixteen, is that how you do it?
Oh, I think we need to check to see, maybe you can check that.
But if the, the current one expires in fifteen, it has to be longer than one year.
Right, yeah, I'm not, yeah, we'll figure that one out. Everybody has to get sworn in, okay? Lauren, go.
Maybe just take one vote, moving all of these appointments, you know, someone could just say so moved, and then you take the vote, and that way everything's, it goes on and it's tied up, and then just you can confirm the associate appointments dates later.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Jerry Kelleher and Joe Feeney.
Oh, just say, everything we did.
Everything we did.
You're moving everything we did.
Whatever Lauren just said is fine.
In Leo too.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, everybody understand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you. Again, everybody has to get sworn in before you can actually sit on the board, so. You do that through the town clerk's office, all right? Six forty-five PM. Attorney Lauren Goldberg from Copeland Page, she's going to be conducting an open meeting law seminar for us.
Good evening. Maybe I should talk really fast so I make up for that time that we missed. So John is gonna do the PowerPoint for me. We're here to talk about the open meeting law, and it's not necessarily the most exciting of laws. In fact, I know it's very frustrating to a lot of people, but let's try and talk about it. I want to put right out there, I didn't write it, I didn't have anything to do with it, so if you're mad, talk to your state rep instead of to me. The, so John, if we could skip up to the overview. We're gonna talk about the changes in the open meeting law, what types of discussions are subject to the law. We're gonna talk about email, meeting notices, some information about conducting a meeting, executive session, minutes, and enforcement. We're gonna start with the basic facts. The open meeting, public records, and conflict of interest laws are known as sunshine laws. And essentially what they are supposed to do is to eliminate much of the secrecy surrounding deliberation in government. They're to make records available, the public's debate, and, I mean, the public body's discussion and debate mostly available. And also to ensure that municipal employees and officials have the town government as their, you know, it's referred to as their one master, so that they're acting out of loyalty to the government instead of out of loyalty to themselves. The open meeting law was amended in two thousand and nine as part of the Ethics Reform Bill. And it's somewhat ironic because if you remember, it actually, the Ethics Reform Bill was signed or approved, not signed, approved, at about midnight one night, in an untelevised session of the legislature. So it's ironic that that action is what is supposed to have led to all of this disclosure in government. And there's varying beliefs about whether that, the balance between the public's right to know and the government's ability to do its business, whether that balances the proper balance. Regardless, this is the law we have, so effective July one, two thousand and ten, we've been dealing with the new law. What does it do? One of the, the first things it does is it centralizes oversight in the Attorney General's office. And I don't know how many of you recall, but the open meeting law used to be enforced in each county by the district attorney. So it was different. When you went from one county to the next, the rules were different. And because law is generally subject to interpretation, what you wound up with, for example, let's just take remote participation, is that there was no such thing as remote participation in most counties in the state. But in Plymouth County, there was remote participation. So it was confusing for people that moved from one place to another, and it was difficult for municipal officials because they, you know, were trying to comply with the law, and they would read something on the Plymouth County DA's site that was different than something on the Bristol County DA's site. So now everything's under the Attorney General's office, and it's a new division called the Division of Open Government, which has the initials DOG. I don't know what to say about that. The new open meeting law alters certain statutory definitions, and it inserts new statutory definitions, and we'll talk about those. It also imposes new requirements for and regulates differently the contents of meeting notices, minutes, executive sessions, exemptions, member participation, and related administrative types of matters. The, one of the first things that the law, the new law did was to require certification. So now, whenever a person is appointed to a board or committee, they must be open meeting law certified. So for those of you just appointed to the Conservation Commission, you know, when you see the town clerk, she's going to hand you a open meeting law, a guide to the open meeting law that's produced by the Attorney General, and she's gonna require you to sign a confirmation that you actually read those materials and understood what they said. And the form is prescribed by the AG, so it's not something that's being made up from town to town. You acknowledge your receipt of these things and of the regulations, there's regulations that are also applicable now and help to interpret the application of the law. Okay, so the first important definition is for a meeting. A meeting is a deliberation by a public body with respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction. And there are certain express exemptions to that definition. So John, we can move to the next one. What's excluded, well, the first thing that's excluded, which is what was excluded before as well, is an onsite inspection. Site visits are not subject to the open meeting law. Why not? Because we can't force private parties to allow all of us onto their property. The public is not generally invited to private property. So what does that mean for a public body? It means, one, they're not required to post those meetings, and two, when they, or they're not required to post those visits, that they can all visit at the same time. What's prohibited, however, is deliberation at an onsite visit. So how do you deal with that? Well, one of the things that we recommend as a practical solution is to, let's say there's gonna be a site visit at nine AM, and you expect it's gonna take forty-five minutes, post back a town hall for a meeting at ten o'clock. So you can immediately talk about the things that you saw at your site visit. Now, when you're at your site visit, how do you avoid deliberating? Deliberating is a back and forth of some sort, a discussion about public business. So how do you avoid a deliberation? But you really want to make sure that a board member sees the same thing that you're seeing. You can say something like, I'd just like everyone to note that pile of wood chips, and how close that is to the bubbling brook that's passing through the property. Everyone will look at that. Someone should not then say, boy, can you believe that? I think that's in the buffer zone. Because that's deliberation, that's an application of the law to the facts, you want to try and avoid that, okay? So this is a delicate balance, and it's not an easy thing to navigate. It's important to be cognizant of it. It's important to keep in mind that your job isn't to deliberate at a site visit. Let's say a mistake is made and someone does say, my goodness, that's definitely within the buffer zone. Make sure that when you go back to the meeting, you acknowledge, you know, I think we might have veered a tiny bit into deliberation because someone noted that this was within the buffer zone. Have a discussion of it on the record at the meeting, and that'll cure the earlier violation. What's another new, we can leave it here, another new exception to the definition of meeting is attendance by a quorum of a body at a meeting like this. Not for this selectmen because they deliberated, but let's say they just came tonight to be part of an open meeting law seminar with no discussion or action on any other matters. They wouldn't be required to post a meeting. You're not required to post a meeting if you go to a conference or a training program. So a conference like the Mass Municipal Association, or the Assessors Association, or something like that. There's not a requirement that the public body post their meeting, unless they intend to deliberate. Unless they intend to act jointly together. So what does that mean? If you go to another, okay, so if you're going to a social event, or a media event, or a conference, you want to avoid the perception, perhaps, that you're deliberating. Don't sit together, don't drive there together, don't talk to each other when you're making comments. You know, if you are at a media event or something, or a conference, you wouldn't turn to your fellow board members and say, see, this is what I told you, this is so important, we need to make sure that blah, blah, blah. That sounds more like deliberation. Just say nothing, make a note, and bring it back to the meeting. Same rule, essentially, as the onsite inspection. The other thing that the open meeting law did is it allows a quorum of a body to attend another public body's posted meeting without posting themselves. So let's say the Board of Selectmen is interested in what the planning board is doing, and a quorum of them show up at that meeting. Under the old open meeting law, it would be very easy to file a complaint. There's a quorum of the bodies here, it's a violation. Under the new open meeting law, it is not a violation, it's fine. Even if all the members of the Board of Selectmen say at a public meeting, we're all gonna go to that planning board meeting because we're really interested in what's gonna happen. Again, when they went to the meeting, they couldn't participate through deliberating, but they could be present there, and they could ask questions, and they could make comments individually like any member of the general public. One of the things that we recommend in terms of trying to avoid an open meeting law violation, if you're the visiting body, and again, this is the same advice I just gave, which is, don't turn to your other members and say, don't we all think this is really important? Don't say that. If you get up to speak, say, you know, my name's Lauren Goldberg, I'm an appointed member of the Conservation Commission, I'm here tonight as an individual and I have the following comments. That makes it clear. You're not weighing in as a, you know, with your board, you're a board member, and that may be relevant, but you, you're weighing in on your own, it's your own position. The other thing is that the other body, the general body that's having the meeting, the public body, shouldn't treat the members of the other public bodies with any special treatment or rules. They can just, if they don't allow anyone to speak, it's likely they shouldn't allow the visiting public body to speak. If they do allow other members of the public to speak, then they would allow the members of the, of the visiting body to speak, individuals. Again, it's just, the same rules apply to those people as apply to any other people attending the meeting. That's the short answer to that. There is also another exemption, which is very curious. It says, "A meeting of a quasi-judicial board held for the sole purpose of making a decision in an adjudicatory proceeding." So that sounds like it applies to the Conservation Commission, and the Board of Assessors, and the Board of Selectmen at a licensing hearing, and the planning board acting on a special permit application, and the zoning board acting on a variance application. But the AG just says, no, that only applies to state public bodies. So there is no exemption for deliberations by a local adjudicatory body, okay? All right, so those, those are very significant exemptions, and it's nice to have it be clear that that's what is excluded from the definition of a meeting. So there are some of the points that I made, post a meeting if you think Post a meeting if you think you might want to talk about something. Don't go there together, don't sit there together, don't whisper to each other. And if you speak, make sure you're clear that you're representing yourself and not the public body. Okay? There's a few examples throughout this talk about decisions that the AG has met. So John, we can go to the next one. And in open meeting law 2012-69, the Carver School Committee was found to have violated the open meeting law where a quorum stepped outside of a meeting of the Board of Selectmen to discuss an alternative to a ballot question relating to funding a particular project. So you can see how it was fine for them to go to the meeting, but what wasn't okay was for them to go deliberate about how to deal with a particular situation. The other thing that's exempt from a meeting that actually we don't have in here, but that is, is town meeting. And that's because there's a warrant, and there's a different notice that's provided for that, and the AG has issued a supplement to its booklet on town meeting. And I sent a number of materials to Dory and to John that they can email or pass along to you or post on the website, and that includes the AG supplement, and it's also on their website. Okay, so we should talk about what this elusive deliberation is. A deliberation is an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction with certain exceptions. So let's just take it slowly. An oral or written communication, that could be a phone call from one person to another person, and then another person to another person. When it gets to a quorum, which is one more than half, then that would constitute a deliberation, okay? Between or among a quorum. It could also be something that's direct, like an email, to all the members of a board at the same time. Okay? That would be a quorum. Or it could be sitting here at the table at a properly posted meeting with a quorum of members present. That's also a quorum, and that's also deliberation. So the Attorney General, and the point of this amendment is to make sure that email is included. Even before this, though, virtually every single DA had taken a public position that email was subject to the open meeting law, and that serial phone conversations or serial emails also were subject to the open meeting law. Meaning as soon as you get to a quorum, it's inconsistent with the law. Can two people email about a matter that's within their public jurisdiction on a five-member board? They may, but it's risky, because any one of those members could forward it to a third member, or it could be talking to a third member and say, "Joe and I think blah, blah, blah." Now that's a quorum, okay? The AG advises not to use email at all, except for essentially administrative matters like emailing out a, an agenda, or emailing about the date that a meeting might be able to happen. Does that mean that most boards and committees never use email? No, it doesn't. It's hard because we're used to the immediacy of email, so it's hard for boards and committee members, just like it would be hard for you at your day job to not use email. But you have to make a really concerted effort to limit yourself so that you don't get to a deliberation. Okay. So you're, as I said, you're allowed, this is the next page now, you're allowed to distribute a meeting agenda, as long as you're not expressing your opinion, allowed to schedule, and allowed to distribute other materials. So for example, let's just pretend that I wrote a letter to John and Dory, and they wanted to get it to the Board of Selectmen. They can forward that directly to a quorum of the board. I could forward it to a quorum of the board, that's no problem, and they can get it. And they can email back and say, "Thank you very much for forwarding that." But what they couldn't do is say, email everybody and say, "That Lauren is brilliant. I love how she approached that issue." Because that's a feeling, idea, belief, whether grounded or not. And so that's what you're not supposed to do in email. The first part would be fine, "Thank you, I've received that." That's not an idea, feeling, belief, or expression of support. That's nothing, it's administrative in nature. Okay? So because you can use, what we said here is, you can use email for distribution of meeting agendas, but you can actually use it to request an agenda item too. It's just that you wind up kind of skating close to the line, not in, in actuality. You can write to the chair and say, "Please place X, Y, or Z on the agenda." But we get tempted as individuals to say, "Because I think it's really important that we deal with that next week." And that, "Because I think it's really important that we deal with it next week," is a belief, feeling, idea, expression of opinion. And that's what takes it from something that's not a deliberation, that's exempt from the definition, over to what could be viewed as a deliberation. So I have an example of that. 2012-93, the AG found that an individual member of the STO School Building Committee violated the open meeting law by emailing a quorum of members asking for comments on a PowerPoint that member had prepared. The committee members responding didn't violate the law because they didn't respond to all. They responded back to the individual who was asking for the comments. You can see that, this is like Fine Lines and Thin Slices, and, that's a quote from Town Meeting Time, but it, it makes it hard to administer, and it creates the opportunity for violations. So what's the best-case scenario? If you have an administrative liaison, you have a staff person, use your staff person. Let your staff person do all that, and never, ever, ever hit reply to all. You need to pretend, when you're dealing with town business with your own board, that that reply to all just doesn't exist. Reply to all is dangerous. One of the things that we recommend, and you can think about using this if you're an administrative liaison, is to not put the board members' names in the CC line. You can say, "I've copied all members of the board on this email, but I've included you in the BCC line, please," so that there's no risk of responding to all. You know, it's not a secret, because it would be a public record, it's that it creates the, a disinclination to violate the law. The other thing that we recommend that, that staff do, or that individuals do when they're emailing a quorum of members, is to write right on there, "Please do not reply to all, this is for consideration at the upcoming meeting on Tuesday." Essentially, it's like an old-fashioned selectmen's packet. You couldn't respond to that packet. It's really any board, but I just, I deal with selectmen a lot. You couldn't respond to it. You'd get it in the mail. "Oh, here's my packet." You want to treat a receipt of an email like that, "Oh, here's my packet." Not responding is the best practice, because it's the most protective. And I do get a lot of feedback from people, they say, "Well, that's ridiculous. This is the year 2013. Everyone uses email." I know, I know. See, again, that's why I didn't write the law, because I know that's really hard. It's hard to limit yourself like that, and it's hard to do business in a world where we're used to doing business more quickly. The next example is, you know, the AG's acknowledgement, as I said, that it can be difficult to determine when a communication serves an administrative function and when it's substantive. So the AG says, "Don't use email." Okay? That's it. The next definition that we should talk about is a, okay, yeah, the next one, John, if you wouldn't mind. "Don't ask for expressed opinions, ideas, or beliefs. Don't ever click on reply to all. Limit email for scheduling and avoid it for undertaking town business. Assume that," oh, this is, this isn't really the open meeting law, but this is my collective experience from the past. "Assume your email will be forwarded, and assume you will read your email either in a local newspaper, or on a blog, or somewhere else." Because email's a paper record. Well, it's a record, and it can be printed, and it can be forwarded. And sometimes it's even more likely, if it's an email, that it will be forwarded than if it was a record, a paper record that was printed out. And so, you know, because of the intersection of the public records law and the open meeting law, it means that you could write an email that creates a violation of the open meeting law, and that email is a public record. So you want to be careful about what you put into your emails. I say that to town officials who, and employees who work in a town on a full-time basis, and I say it to boards and committees as well, especially in a town where people, a small town where people know each other. You know, if I email, let's say I email Dory, and I say, "Dory, I'm just wondering how your distant cousin is. I heard she fell and hurt her hip, and by the way, I've copied all the members of the Planning Board on this because I want to remind them to blah, blah, blah." Well, now there's personal stuff in there with this business email. If we got a public records request for it, we're gonna, we could delete, I mean, we could redact the personal information, because that personal information contains medical information, which is absolutely exempt from disclosure, but it complicates things. And it makes it so that you have to really go through and review, review these things. The other thing, and I don't think that it's really stressed in writing here, but the thing to remember as well is that if you use your home computer, and you're doing town business, and you get a public records request for it, regardless of whether that's on your home computer, or on a work computer, it's still a public record. So, you know, a few years ago, I don't know if you remember, in Boston, there was this whole brouhaha because the chief of staff had been deleting his emails as he went, and so the supervisor of public records ordered a forensic examination of his computer. So in theory, that could happen to you. So if you have a staff liaison, copy your staff liaison on your work-related emails, because, on your town-related emails, because then you don't have any records retention issues. And if it's, if you don't have a staff liaison, or you aren't in a regular practice of doing that, then print out any of your emails that are relevant to your town business, and bring them in with you to your meeting, whatever night it is, or, you know, every other week. Bring it in as a matter of practice, and just hand it in the folder to whoever is there for the town who's going to take the minutes, or whatever it is. There's records retention requirements, so you need to keep those in mind. All right, let's move on. What is a public body? A public body is any multiple-member board, commission, committee, or subcommittee within the executive or legislative branch of any town, however created, elected, appointed, or otherwise constituted, established to serve a public purpose. And provided further, that a subcommittee shall include any multiple-member body created to advise or make recommendations to a public body. If a public body, like the Board of Selectmen, or the Conservation Commission, or the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board, or any other, the Open Space Committee, any public body creates a subcommittee, even if there's less than a quorum on the subcommittee, then that subcommittee is also subject to the open meeting law. And this usually makes people upset, and I, again, I tell them, "You can save your tomatoes for your state rep, or your state senator," because I did not write that. And no one's even laughing, because everyone's horrified. It's okay. The way the law works is, if the public body creates a committee, the committee's subject to the open meeting law. It's pretty simple, except when it's in practice. It's like, really? This random committee that meets once, you know, every other month for whatever time is subject to the open meeting law? Yes. If you have a five-member committee, and you appoint three members of your committee to do a focus on a particular matter, and you ask five members of the general public to join two, is that eight group, eight-person group a subcommittee? Yes. If you appointed two members to do something collectively, and they, and you also appointed three members of some, you know, three public members of the public, is that committee a subcommittee? Yes. Even though it's less than a quorum of the parent body. So there's one exception to this rule that is very interesting, and that is, it's called the Connolly Rule, because there's a case, Hanover v. School Committee, Connolly v. School Committee of Hanover, and in that case, the superintendent, who has full sole jurisdiction to make appointments of principals, appointed a committee to give him recommendations. And there was an open meeting law complaint filed, it went all the way up to the SJC, and the SJC said, "No, the superintendent had authority to make that decision on his own, and it was his committee. It wasn't a committee of the town. It was a committee of the superintendent, who's not subject to the open meeting law." So that committee's not subject to the open meeting law. And the AG has said that that rule still applies. So under your town charter, John has something that's his sole responsibility, he makes appointment, an appointment of a committee, not subject to the open meeting law. All right, now this is a good example of this. So in 2012-28, the AG found that a bylaw review committee that consisted of seven members, the town administrator, town clerk, building inspector, planner, agent, director of public health, health police chief, and superintendent of public works, was a subcommittee, because it had been created by the Board of Selectmen. However, that same group, had it been appointed by the town administrator, or essentially had it been like a department head meeting instead, would not have been subject to the open meeting law, because it wouldn't have been appointed by a committee, subject to the law. All right. Do, do people have questions up to here? Sean?
What if someone submits a warrant out, called to authorize the town moderator set up a committee to do whatever? Same thing as we've got you, C.A.
Under the AG's ruling on town meeting, that committee wouldn't be subject to the open meeting law. Under the Connolly Rule, that committee wouldn't be subject to town meeting. I mean, subject to the open meeting law. So in both cases, the answer is, that committee wouldn't be subject to the open meeting law. I should add, though, and I think it's important to recognize that, let's say town meeting wants to create a committee that will be subject to the open meeting law. I think town meeting could go ahead and say, "We'd like the moderator to appoint a committee of five people to study X," and that that committee should be subject to the open meeting law. Under town meeting's request, the committee's subject to the open meeting law. It may mean that the AG wouldn't take jurisdiction, you know, if a complaint was filed, but maybe they would. I don't know. Okay? Just because it wouldn't be required by law doesn't mean it couldn't be required.
I just had a question. Lauren, when you were talking about the onsite meetings where there should not be any deliberation, but that doesn't prevent a board from attending an onsite meeting and posting and deliberating, is that right?
Just to make sure that everyone heard the question, does the fact that an onsite meeting isn't subject to the open meeting law mean that it can't be posted and that deliberation couldn't occur? If the property owner is willing to allow members of the public to be at a, at a meeting at a, on private property, and if that property is accessible, then a meeting could be held there. But meetings are required to be held in accessible locations, both under the ADA and under the way that the AG interprets the law. So my recommendation would be that, instead of having a posted meeting at a private location on private property, except if it was at something, and, you know, I, I'm just kind of ad-libbing here, but let's say it was a site visit at a nursing home. I don't know why, for a variance or something. And we know that nursing home is required by state law to be accessible, so in a situation like that, and if they're willing to have the meeting in a, in a publicly accessible room, then I don't see anything that would prohibit a meeting from being held there. Okay? Yes?
Just to go back to the moderator's appointments. In our town, the moderator appoints the finance committee, also appoints the, he or she also appoints like the charter review committee. Are you saying that they wouldn't be subject to the open meeting law?
Thank you for bringing that up. They would be subject to the open meeting law, because in that case, it's, it's created by bylaw, so it's a committee of the town with the appointing authority specified. But that's different than town meeting just creating an ad hoc committee at town meeting.
Unless the committee created at town meeting was required to follow the open meeting law. If town meeting said that, then that would have, it should.
And the other thing I could point out, too, is that maybe town meeting didn't, maybe town meeting doesn't address that fact, but the appointing authority, Sean or John, says, "Oh, we want this committee to be subject to the open meeting law. We want to see it posted, and we want people to follow those rules." Then the committee would have to follow that as part of its charge. Okay? All right. Meeting notices. This is the other area where the open meeting law is significantly different, okay? It used to be that meetings were required to be posted 48 hours in advance of a meeting, excluding Saturday, I'm sorry, excluding Sundays and legal holidays. Now it's excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. In addition, it's required that the meeting notice be posted in a manner that's conspicuously visible 24 hours a day, or that there be some sort of alternate posting, which is allowed by the regulations, and that includes internet access of postings. So some towns went out and bought, like the clear glass cases, and put those outside, and would put the meeting notices there. Others ran a scroll and a computer right inside a glass door. Still others would do the meeting postings at the police station, because a police station is open 24 hours a day. However, within, I'd say, six months of the new open meeting law taking effect, the AG authorized the internet to be used as an alternative posting location, and that's what most towns did. So, okay. What about timing for purposes of the charter? The charter says that meeting notices have to be posted not later than 48 hours in advance of a meeting, so now that, every time you comply with the open meeting law, you comply with that requirement, okay? So you automatically comply with the charter requirement. So you automatically comply with the charter requirement by complying with the open meeting law. It's more rigorous of a standard. Um, what about the manner? In addition to the requirement for posting on the bulletin board or an alternate posting to comply with the charter, written notice of a special meeting has to be personally delivered to either the business, um, of the member or their residence, at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. That is not covered in the open meeting law at all. Okay? Yes?
On that particular one, no, so you had a board that was deliberating, deliberating onsite, and you had the actual client or applicant there, and it was pre-arranged, you still have to send a notice that you're gonna be onsite?
It's the members that would require the notice, not, not the, not anybody else. Okay? So, let's just say there's a variance that's gonna be considered, or a special permit, or something like that, no special notice is required to the recipient, except under any other laws. And one of the things I should point out is that the open meeting law and the charter notice requirements do not substitute for, or take precedence over, any other applicable law. So if there's another law that requires notice to a butters, that law still applies. And just because you posted for the open meeting law doesn't necessarily mean that that law has been met, and same thing the other way. Just because you give notice under some other substantive law doesn't mean that you don't have to give notice under the open meeting law. Um, okay, and the one other thing to point out is that charter includes this special meeting by petition, which is something else that's not covered by the general laws, and that is that fifty registered voters can petition for a special meeting of a board or committee. Um, I, this is a bit curious under the way the open meeting law applies, because the open meeting law does not require public participation in meetings, okay? It only requires that members of the public be able to attend any given meeting. So essentially, in theory, registered voters could petition for a meeting and get to the meeting, and the selectmen, or the planning board, or the zoning board, or the conservation commission, or any other board or committee could say, we have this meeting today, it was petitioned, you know, fifty voters have asked for it, does any member of the board have anything to say about this? They could say, no, really. Um, and they could say, okay, well, thank you, we've had our meeting, and close it. It may not be politically, um, responsive, but it wouldn't be illegal. Okay? So, just keep in mind, the open meeting law, both in its current incarnation and its former incarnation, only allows people to speak when recognized by the chair. And if the chair chooses not to recognize them, that is that, in theory, and I know it sounds goofy, that would apply, you know, to the, if the chair decided that no one else at the table should speak, they, in theory, they could just not recognize them.
Don't tell them that.
Yeah, I know. I really haven't seen a chair use their authority like that, just like at town meeting, the moderator, you know, generally will recognize the people that are standing in line until someone moves a question. And that, that's the way that chair, chairs of boards and committees generally act. But with respect to the public's right to participate, it doesn't exist. It only exists if the chair chooses to allow it. Okay? Um, all right, let's go back to notice. So what does this mean? If you want to have a meeting on a Monday, you have to post on Thursday. Okay? If Monday is a legal holiday, you need to post on Thursday to hold a meeting on Tuesday. We can go to the next one, John. All right? So, the other thing is, if you have your notice in an alternate location, it has to be posted there as well, at the same time. Okay? So, the meeting notice is posted in both locations, more than forty-eight hours prior to the start of the meeting, based on both, you know, the idea of Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, and making sure it's in both places. So, there's actually a case in Templeton, I believe, where the board or committee didn't post in both places, and so the AG said that is a violation of the open meeting law. Um, I don't know how much experience we've had with the AG's decisions, but they're very rigid about these things. So, whereas, under the old open meeting law, the DA would say something like, um, you know, the board, there's been a complaint filed against the board of whatever, um, that they filed their meeting notice forty-seven hours prior, and although that's technically not in compliance with law, uh, the board is strongly encouraged to be more careful about posting. Now the AG says that violates the law. So, those technical requirements matter. Yes?
The chair is not having to allow them to speak.
True.
It ain't, the board of appeals.
Okay. I said, yeah. Let me, let me be clear. Under the open meeting law, the chair is not required to recognize anyone. There may be another law that imposes a public hearing requirement, so when there's a public hearing, that's a different standard than just a public meeting. But the, even at a public hearing, a person is not permitted to speak unless the chair recognizes them. So let's say that there's a person that's trying to monopolize a meeting, or a person is being improper in terms of making derogatory remarks, or deriding, or, or making negative comments about another person, that person has no right to speak without the permission of the chair. So the chair can establish a rule to say, you know, if I ask you, and somewhat, I mean, you know, Sean does this at town meeting, and I'm sure you've heard him say something like, you know, we're gonna be civil, and whatever, if you're not, then I'm gonna ask you to be quiet, if you fail to be quiet, I'll ask you to sit down, if you fail to sit down, then I'll ask you to leave, if you fail to leave, I'm gonna have you escorted from the meeting. Those same rules are within the authority of the chairman of a board or committee under the open meeting law. If you anticipate that a meeting is going to be exceptionally controversial, no, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing out, if, if a chair expects a meeting to be controversial, then it's a good idea to notify the police department ahead of time, and that is what we, what we recommend in situations like that. So, that there is a clear understanding of what the rules are, and that, you know, there's backup for the chair if things get uncomfortable. Um, and you know, I'm not gonna name names, but in another town, of which I'm aware, like there was a, a desk-throwing incident, and you know, that's nerve-wracking, that's not okay, and the chair, essentially at that point, said, we're gonna recess the meeting, and that's something the chair can do at any time, wait for tempers to cool down, wait for people who are overwrought to be calmer, and if appropriate, to continue the meeting at that time, and if not, to continue it till a different time, date and place certain. Okay? Um, all right. A meeting cannot be continued from one night to the next unless the meeting's been posted ahead of time with the right number of forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. So, let's go to the zoning example, because it's a good one. Sometimes a hearing will run from one, you know, several nights, let's say it's gonna be a three-night hearing. The Zoning Board of Appeals can open the meeting on the night that it's posted, and, and, you know, continue that meeting to the next night if necessary, if it's also been posted under the open meeting law. If not, you need to give time for it to be posted in both places, at least forty-eight hours ahead of time, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. So what do you do if you think it's gonna be three nights, and it turns out to be four? Maybe on night two, you post for that, that fourth night, or you have to, um, wait until you can get that forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays? The other thing is, what if you post for three nights, but then you only need two nights? It's fine to cancel a meeting. What you cannot do is post Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and not really mean it, and then like show up on Thursday, um, because that essentially is, and looking to avoid the requirements of the open meeting law, not really planning to hold a meeting that night. So it's fine to post for as many nights as you reasonably believe you will be present. Okay? Um, all right, we already talked about that. What's an emergency? That's an exception to this forty-eight-hour requirement, and mostly, an emergency is something that's a threat to the public health and safety. And it has to be something that's not kind of man-made, that's the general rule. So, if a house is, I, I usually give the board of health as an example, because the board of health deals with emergencies. A house might be about to fall down. If a house is about to fall down, and no one realized it, and the building inspector does an inspection and says, whoa, the footing's here are all wrong, and this house is imminently going to fall down, then the board of health could have a meeting as soon, you know, Dory could post, or whoever posts the meeting, the board of health could come right in at town hall and hold the meeting. Versus, let's say the building inspector does an inspection like last year, and the house is about to fall down, but it's not gonna be really today or tomorrow, it's just not in good shape, then it's not, not an emergency, just because we decide all of a sudden we want to deal with it. Okay? Um, I'll give you an example of an emergency, was a few years back, there was a, um, April first snowstorm, and a lot of towns had scheduled their town elections on that day, and in Swamscott, there was, uh, you know, there's a seawall, and water was coming up over the seawall during the storm. So the selectmen talked on the phone to cancel the election, because it wasn't safe for anyone to leave their houses to come into town hall, and there clearly, it wasn't expected that the seawall would get breached, so they could meet right then to do what they needed to do. Um, what should you do? Comply with the law to the extent that you can. That means, post as soon as you know, if you can do that, meet at town hall or some other public place if you're able to, limit your deliberations to the emergency. Okay? It's tempting, because you're all together to, you know, do some other business, you can't do that. Um, take minutes of your meeting and review it, and review those minutes, and include them with the minutes of the next regularly scheduled meeting. And what I usually say is, when you're posting the emergency, post the next legal meeting as well, you know, the legally posted meeting at the same exact time. You can post, let's say we're dealing with this board of health issue, um, post that day for a four o'clock meeting, and also post a meeting that's out at least forty-eight hours calculated under the open meeting law. That way, you go to that next meeting, you say, we had this emergency meeting, here was what was, what made it an emergency, we discussed this, it's reflected in the minutes, we're gonna include those minutes in our current, the minutes of our current meeting, and we're gonna vote right now to ratify, validate, and confirm the action that we already took. That way, you've wrapped it all up in a nice package, and anybody who missed the first meeting, because they, it was an emergency, and it was like at four o'clock in the afternoon, can go to the next meeting, because it's been posted, under the law is required. Okay? All right, um, under your charter, you also have some information about emergencies. And that says that a matter not appearing on an agenda can't be acted upon unless a separate vote is taken approving a resolution that an emergency exists and action is required. Note that the emergency language is different, though, about a matter that doesn't appear on the agenda, because it is required for the immediate preservation of the peace, health, safety, or convenience of the town. This is not a threat, only a threat to the public health and safety. If something comes up that's not on a meeting notice, under the open meeting law, the question is whether it was quote-unquote reasonably anticipated. Okay? We're gonna talk about that in a second. If something comes up that's not in an agenda at a, um, under the charter, there needs to be a vote on it that says, you know, we really think we need to take action now, either because we need to do it for the preservation of the peace, health, or safety of the town, or for the convenience of the town. And that may be, I mean, there may be times that that is, it's convenient to talk about. Um, if someone raises something, for example, that it may not be a threat to the public health and safety, but it's something that's important and should be acted upon, you know, a board or committee may decide that that's important to do. They would vote to take this, take this vote that an emergency exists and action is required. Um, do I think that the reason has to be explicitly detailed and carefully constructed? No, because it's also allowed to be for the convenience of the town. Okay? But I think it's a good idea to say what the reason is. All right, um, the next thing is, what goes in the notice? Now this is the number-one issue. If I had to guess, I would see the AG deals with this issue more than any other issue, and that is that it's required to contain a quote-unquote listing of topics the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed. Now you already had a quote-unquote agenda requirement in town, so this is somewhat less shocking than it might be for a town that never had anything like that. Under the open meeting law, the old requirement was time, date, place of meeting, and the board that was meeting, and that was it. You didn't need to say what you're gonna talk about, you didn't need to identify any particular matter, you didn't need to even put down a topic, like you didn't need to say, open meeting law seminar, you could say nothing. And if people wanted to go to the meeting, they could go, and if they didn't want to, they didn't have to. But it was really, the burden was entirely on members of the public to show up if they wanted to hear the meeting, or to watch it on TV, as the case may be. Under the new open meeting law, the AG has interpreted that word, listing of topics, to mean listing of items to be discussed. So it's not generally appointments, it's conservation commission appointment, with the names of the applicants, if you know them, which is, you know, something that you might have done, or you might not, because it's very, very specific. It's, um, for example, uh, to consider issuance of fall soil permits. What's a fall soil permit? Particular addresses, particular house numbers, particular applicants. Um, and, you know, the AG has issued decision after decision about this. We made several arguments to them at the beginning that it really is inconsistent with the way town government operates. Something comes up, someone wants to bring something up, and their basic position is, no, it needs to be very detailed. So, that requires a review of, you know, the anticipating what's going to be discussed, detailing it, and then if something comes up, deciding, is this something that we really need to deal with tonight? And if not, or is this something I should have, or I did anticipate? So for example, let's say John, um, comes to you with a report about something that the chairman had no reason to know. You had no reason, you, you had no reason to know it. Can you act on it? Under the open meeting law, yes, it wasn't reasonably anticipated by the chair. Um, under the charter, would you have to take a vote saying it's, you know, kind of an emergency, and it's for the convenience of the public? Yes, but you could act on it if you wanted to. The other option, and this is what the AG recommends, is that you put it forward to a time when it can appear on a meeting notice. And I, I personally think that it's very difficult for a person who's acting in a volunteer capacity to keep all of those requirements straight, and, um, in the moment, figure out exactly what should happen. It's a hard job for the chair to, to sort through that. Remembering the AG's recommendation is, move it forward to a time when it can appear on a meeting notice, it's simpler that way. You don't, the chair then doesn't have to analyze, did I reasonably anticipate this? Didn't I reasonably anticipate it? Just because I knew that people might want to talk about that, and I chose not to, does that mean that I reasonably anticipated it would be discussed at a meeting? I chose not to include it on the agenda. So what does that mean? That it is reasonably anticipated, that it's not? This is a hornet's nest. Um, and while I think a board or committee has the right, absolutely under the law, to consider a matter that wasn't reasonably anticipated, it leads to potential challenges under the open meeting law. So, you know, it's a protective stance to say, it's not on the agenda, we won't do it. Um, but there may be times when it's not on the agenda, and we want to do it, and that's okay, too. So, it's a policy issue. Legally, if it's not on the agenda, and it wasn't reasonably anticipated by the chair, it can be discussed at a meeting. Sean?
What about old business, new business, and correspondence?
Old business, new business, and correspondence. Those catchalls are fine to include, but if you actually know what the old business is, you have to write it down. If you know what the new business is, you have to write it down. If you, um, know what the correspondence is, you put it in. Now, does that mean that you can't talk about a letter that was received after the forty-eight hours, but before, and after the chair made the agenda with the staffers? No, it doesn't. It wasn't reasonably anticipated, it can be discussed. Um, should it be, could it be, might it be? Those are policy decisions. Um, and then the other side of that as well is, um, you can update a meeting notice if the chair, and the, let's say, you know, we're back to selectmen, let's say that the chair is out of town, and John can't get in touch with the chair. Well, the meeting notice can't be updated, that, there's no authorization to do it, so it's not updated. But let's say John talks to the chair, and the chair says, absolutely, put X, Y, or Z on, just came to our attention, we want to make sure that we deal with that tomorrow night, you'd update the meeting notice as soon as you are able. Um, if you update a meeting notice, what should you do? Should you take down the old notice? Maybe, but on your new notice, I recommend, there's nothing in the law that says this, but I recommend that you put a note there that says, you know, this meeting notice was updated at whatever time and whatever date, to add the following item. So it's clear what's the new item, people don't have to debate about it, everybody knows what it is. Um, I, I mean, I think just from the nature of this conversation, this, this is very technical, and this is why so many complaints are filed, because this isn't just intuitive. It's not intuitive. It's the way the law has been interpreted by the AG, and it's not easy. So, um, I think even the AG recognizes that, because even when the AG finds a violation of this, the AG basically explains it, and kind of lays it out, and says, future violations may result in further action, but generally doesn't take, you know, punitive- may result in further action," but generally doesn't take, you know, punitive action with respect to inadvertent violations of this nature. And the other thing is, the AG does every time point out this position that they've taken, that they, they recommend that you push forward matters that aren't on the agenda. Okay, so sufficient specificity so that a reasonable member of the public can read the topic and understand the nature of the anticipated discussion. This example is actually one of my personal favorites in terms of how hard the law is. The Melrose School Committee included in, in their, oh, actually, it's not this one. The Melrose School Committee concluded that, I'm sorry, the AG concluded that the Melrose School Committee violated the open meeting law, because they didn't put into the meeting notice the name of the person with whom they would be entering negotiations. So it was their school committee, I mean, the school superintendent, they didn't put her name into the meeting notice. It just said, "Negotiations with non-union personnel." And there is an objection. Okay? So it's pretty likely that anybody who knows anything about school committees is going to know that that's who they're negotiating with. Mostly, everyone else would be in a union. But, okay, there was that. All right, so the next one, that's my personal favorite. And that is that the AG concluded that the Natick School Committee violated the open meeting law by not including specific details in their meeting notice concerning a vote on town meeting issues. Now, again, anybody who knows anything about school committee and town meeting knows that the school committee's role, or what it would likely be interested in, would be limited to articles in which it had a financial interest. The budget, maybe capital items that they're looking for, computers, or fixing doors. So it had said, quote-unquote, "Town meeting update" in the meeting notice, and the AG recommended that the notice should have said, "Discussion of Articles 1, 9, 10, 18, 32, 33, and 35. The school committee may vote to recommend action on these articles at town meeting." Right? I mean, I see head shaking, and that's because it's, it's really hard. I mean, particularly because those article numbers might not even be the article numbers that the warrant would have by the time the warrant came out. So, I don't know, I think we can all agree that that's a pretty high standard. In addition, this is in Freetown, and I used the soil permit example before, but the, they listed each fall and each spring, fall, renewal of fall soil permits. And the AG said, "You need to actually list each permit, the name of the applicant, and the location that's being considered in order for that to be valid." Sometimes, boards of selectmen, especially in towns without a town manager or form of government, will make appointments of hundreds of people. They'll act on renewals of hundreds of licenses, and apparently, each of those should be listed in specific detail. For land use boards, this is another issue. You really want to add to your meeting notices, if you have an application for a variance, it should say the property owner, or the applicant, the property location, and the particular relief being requested. Okay. So practically, we talked about if the chair didn't anticipate it, then the law does not prohibit discussion or even voting on a matter. The AG recommends that it gets pushed forward. And the next slide, John, is actually where they use the language, I think. Yep, I said if you, if the chair gets noticed, then the chair can update. All right. Under open meeting law 5-4-11, and the reason it's, it's, like, the convention for numbering is different is because the AG found there wasn't a violation of the open meeting law. Essentially, what they said was, they strongly encourage boards not to consider matters that may be controversial or of particular interest to the public until the topic's been properly listed. Again, that's not a requirement under law, however. The AG also found that there wasn't a violation by the Stoughton Board of Selectmen where the chair didn't reasonably anticipate forty-eight hours prior to the meeting that a subject matter would be addressed. This often comes up more generally in towns where there's a public participation portion of the meeting, because the matter that would be raised by the public wouldn't necessarily be something that the chair anticipated. So if, you know, my all-powerful chair doesn't allow for any public participation, then it's less likely that something the chair didn't anticipate coming up will come up. Just one second. The only time that that would normally happen is if, let's say, let's just take the selectmen, for example, and something came to the attention of one selectman with respect to streetlights in a particular area that the chair had no reason to know about, and the person might say, you know, "Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to raise the issue that the streetlights have been out on Main Street, and I'd really like to see that fixed. I've had several complaints." That might be something the chair never heard about before, had no reason to anticipate, but that it would make sense to act on. You know, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the town manager that he follow-up on this. You know, okay. I don't think that has to really go on the next week's agenda, but under your charter, you'd still say something like, "Because this is convenient to the public, we'd like to act on it." Something like that. I don't know. Yes, question?
What's the penalty if you're in violation?
Well, enforcement is a whole area unto itself. We are going to talk about it in more detail. The AG has a range of enforcement options available to her. It includes things from ordering compliance with the law generally, requiring publication or making public minutes of meetings that were held in violation of the law, requiring future compliance on a particular issue, requiring minutes to be prepared that are more detailed. There is the possibility of a thousand-dollar civil penalty, but that can only be imposed after a hearing. There is the ability of the AG to go to court to enforce a violation, or to enforce, not to enforce the violation, but to enforce compliance with whatever order was in response to the violation. Okay. So, and I will also say, the press seems to be a way of enforcing the open meeting law as well. I know that in particular towns, the press has been very active in reporting on violations, and that that has also kind of acted as a impetus to take more care, to be strictly in compliance with the law. So, all right. Locations. I said earlier, has to be accessible. It's required both by the AG under the open meeting law and by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Can you meet in a privately-owned location? In theory, yes. A church, a nursing home. Can you meet in someone's house? In theory, if it's accessible and any member of the public that would want to be there is welcome, then in theory, yes. Practically, it's not recommended, because how do we really know it's accessible? You know, just because I live in my house and I have a wheelchair doesn't mean that it meets the requirements of the ADA. Okay. What happens if there's more people than anticipated and the room itself is too small? This can only be answered practically, and the practical answer is, if you can't have everyone here who wants to hear, then you need to move somewhere else, or continue the meeting to a different time, place, and date certain, that's at least forty-eight hours in advance calculated under the open meeting law. But let's say we wanted to move from one of the rooms over there to over here. Is that okay? Yes. What, what would we recommend? You put a notice on the outside building door. You put a notice on the inside door, and you leave the door open here. We also would recommend that you wait a few minutes. Don't just start the meeting up here three seconds after a decision is made you need to change rooms. Wait ten minutes so that people can come in. So if the chair were to recess the meeting for that reason, he would say something like, "We're going to reconvene in the cotter room in ten minutes at eight twenty-two," or something, so that people understand what's going to happen. What if there's no room here that's big enough? Well, the question of whether you can move to another building is not necessarily answered by the AG. It's possible. Again, thinking about being able to include everyone that wants to be included and how you manage that. One of the issues that I have is, let's say someone got dropped off here, how would they get to the next location? Or what if someone with a disability would have to go through, you know, a lot of physical exertion to get from this one place to another, even if they were capable of doing it? Those are things to think about. I have heard the question asked, "Well, what if extra attendance is used as a weapon?" Meaning, you flood a meeting with people so that it's not able to include everyone. You know, it's theoretically possible that that could happen. And if it does, my recommendation is that the next meeting be scheduled for an auditorium, because that way, there's no issue. Anybody who wants to be there can be there. I wouldn't recommend continuing to keep scheduling the meetings in a small meeting room if that's happening, because clearly, the political will at that point is going to make it difficult for the board or committee to act. So just schedule that next meeting in an auditorium. Deals with that problem. Okay, and what about closing the doors during an open meeting? There's nothing that says you have to leave the doors open, but if you close the doors and people think that you're not allowed to come in, then there's a potential for an open meeting law complaint. So I recommend that if you're going to meet in a room with a closed door because it's loud in the hall, or because there's too many people that are cold and there's cold air coming in from outside every time the door opens, put a note on the outside of the door that says, "Open meeting being held by the Conservation Commission. Feel free to enter." Or "Enter at any time," something like that. Again, you're just protecting yourself by taking that extra action. You're not required to. Wouldn't it be a violation of the law to close the door? In contrast, it would be a violation of the law to lock the door. And as it appears, the Melrose School Committee, although I don't think it was intentional, they held a meeting in a locked portion of the school, and they had like an attendant that was letting people in, and then at some point during the meeting, the attendant left. And so there was no one, no one could get in. So that was a violation of the open meeting law. Okay, when can meetings be held? There is nothing in the open meeting law that restricts the time a meeting can be held, but the AG, again, is kind of making policy through their determinations, encourages public bodies to schedule meetings at a time that permits maximum attendance. I don't know. In some communities, people like to get up early and take a train to work, and so having a meeting first thing in the morning might be convenient to them, because they could do that on their way to work. In other communities, maybe it's a more of a commuter, a driving commuter. Maybe they'd rather do it at night. I think it's going to be hard, as a policy matter, to find the time that encourages maximum attendance. I think a board or committee has enough problems scheduling a meeting that's convenient for itself. That, I think, is the first and foremost. When can this board or committee meet? And once you do that, you know, that's fine. Is it convenient to schedule a meeting at eleven o'clock at night? No, it's not. Eleven o'clock at night is late. Do I think it violates the law? No. Okay. Practical considerations with public participation, and this is something that we talked about. Are you required to allow? No, it's not required by law. If you allow public participation, my recommendation is that you adopt a policy about how that's going to work. And again, I'm not talking about a public hearing necessarily. I'm just talking about a public meeting. So what do I mean? We're going to allow fifteen minutes for public discussion. No person can speak more than once, except if there's no one else who wants to speak, and we're limiting people to three-minute periods, unless there's no one else that wants to speak. One of the things that we recommend is trying not to resolve matters that are raised at that time. So if someone raises something in public discussion, and I'm not saying it because of the open meeting law, or because of your charter, I'm saying because if something comes up for the first time, it may be that trying to resolve it, going back and forth to make this person satisfied, will lead to problems. And it's often a good time to kind of wait on that and think about it later. We always recommend that a debate be avoided. Questions and answers should go through the chair. Members shouldn't, you know, speak to each other, to respond to the public. It should go through the chair during, especially during the public participation period, because that allows for a more organized presentation of issues. And as I said, limit the person's time in total. Now, one of the things that has come up is, there is a Superior Court decision, and it came out of the case of the Foxborough Board of Selectmen with respect to the casinos. I don't know if this, if anyone read these stories about how. In theory, one side was allowed to speak, and the other side, they were told, "Look, this isn't a debate. We're not going to have this discussion right now." So there was a, an argument made that because one side was allowed and the other side wasn't, that was a due process issue. You can't allow one side of something to go on and on and on and on, and not have those same restrictions be applicable to the other side, which is why it makes sense ahead of time, limit the time per person and the total time for speaking. And, you know, I know some chairman will say, "Is there anyone else? You know, we've heard from the pro side of this. Is there anyone here who wants to speak against it? If not, go ahead, you know, I'll let someone else who's in favor go ahead." Trying to be somewhat balanced may help with due process claims. It may be impossible to do. A person may not want to say how they feel about something before, so they may not be willing to announce that they feel something, either positively or negatively, until they're actually speaking, and that's really not on the chair to figure out. But if the chair is able to somehow navigate through that, then good luck. So good luck to you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, what else? Yeah, there's specific decisions of the AG on this idea that you're not required to accept petitions or agenda topics submitted by the public, and not required to permit members of the public participate in meetings. Under the Zoning Act or the Wetlands Protection Act, there may be a requirement for a public hearing, and that changes the dynamic somewhat because of that. But it's, that's under a different statute. Under the new open meeting law, the, anyone who wants to record is required to notify the chair, and the chair notifies the public that the meeting's being recorded. This is different than under the old open meeting law. And there is actually a wiretap statute in Massachusetts that requires both sides being, the recorder and the person who's being recorded, to kind of agree that that's going to happen. And the new open meeting law, that's the balance that they came up with. Oh, okay. We'll tell the chair, and the chair will tell everyone that the meeting's being recorded. Okay? I do know there are people that have forgotten to tell the chair, and afterwards, they're like, "Oh, my God, I forgot to tell the chair. Is this a violation?" Every effort should be made to notify the chair that there's going to be a recording, and the chair should make every effort to notify the public that a recording's being made. One of the ways that we've seen towns do it is, the chair will actually just have a piece of paper that he or she like puts right on the outside of the table that says, "This meeting may be recorded by any person present." Or, "Please notify me if you're recording so that I can notify members of the public." Something like that. It, it can be hard to remember. On the other hand, the chair has the right to designate where that recorder's going to go. So, and I'm not joking, I've been at several meetings where there's been a very aggressive recorder who believes that he or she should be able to run from person to person speaking to record what they're saying. And that is not the case. They can record at a place that's been authorized. So a recorder could be left on the chair, or they can hold their recorder, but they can't run around with it. And same thing with videotaping. All right. Let's see. Remote participation? This is a whole new thing. I, I did not remember to ask ahead of time whether the Board of Selectmen has accepted remote participation. All right. So once it's been authorized, then, and it has been, the AG did a public information query about whether people thought this was important, and people answered yes, and the AG came up with a number of significant restrictions on the use of remote participation if it's been authorized by the chief executive officer, which it has. Once it's been authorized, the chief executive officer can impose additional limitations on the use of remote participation than what is found in the law. But individual boards can't come up with their own rules besides. So it's whatever the Board of Selectmen say. So if the Board of Selectmen said, "You can use remote participation no more than, you know, once a month, or no more than one person per meeting," the board can make that decision, but individual boards cannot. Let's see. One of the restrictions is that a quorum has to be physically present. So if there's a five-member board, you need three members present in the room. The next one is that remote participants are considered to be quote-unquote "present for purposes of the law," and they get to vote. Okay? Why does this matter? It matters most particularly in conservation, zoning, planning, a licensing hearing that the Board of Selectmen might do, where the testimony continues from time to time, because under state law, there's a case law that says essentially, if you miss the session of an adjudicatory hearing, you may not participate in the vote, unless you've adopted thirty-nine, section twenty-three D, and then you can make up one session. But you're considered present if you participate remotely, even if materials are distributed. Okay? One of the things the AG recommends is that if there are going to be plans or something presented at the meeting, that those be asked to be provided ahead of time, and they be emailed out to the members, or delivered in some other way to the members who aren't going to be present. One, another requirement is that everybody who is participating remotely has to be able to be heard, and people have to be able to hear that person. And if they're going to be prohibiting, participating, sorry, by like a Skype or something like that, they need to be able to be seen and, to see and be seen for everybody. So that's a little awkward still, you know, except- You know, except maybe a situation like this where you're able to project the person's image perhaps. It can be awkward because how do you get that computer like turned in such a way they can see and be seeing it? It's a little difficult. So, audio is easier to deal with than video at this point. What happens if there's a problem during the, the connection and the person drops off? Well, that's up to the chair. The chair can try and fix it, the chair can just let the call drop. All votes taken while someone's participating remotely have to be by roll-call vote. That makes sense because, you know, that person who's remote, you might not hear them. So that's different than the normal course where it's not required to be a roll-call vote. Let's see what else. All right, I guess that's it for remote. Let's talk about executive session. There's a new, under the new law, there's somewhat of a change with respect to going into executive session for a few of the exemptions. And the timeline for review and release of minutes is different. So, if we go to the next slide. Before going into executive session, the chair is to state the purpose of the session, quote-unquote "stating all subjects that may be revealed without compromising the purpose for which the session was called." Essentially what that means is, and this, this actually applies to the meeting notice too. If you can include the information in the meeting notice, then you should include it as part of your vote. So if we would go back to our example of including the name of non-union personnel who you may be going into negotiations with, you would put that in the meeting notice, and then you'd say it when the motion comes to go into executive session. If it's a litigation matter, the AG has taken the position that you name the case, if naming the case wouldn't negatively impact your litigating position. Our position is that there's many situations where that might actually negatively impact the litigating position, but it's something you need to think about. Instead of it just being automatic that you wouldn't announce it. And you have to state, like you did before, whether the body's returning to open session. Every executive session, the meeting starts in open session, vote to go into executive session stating all the purposes that can be stated without negating the purpose of the session, and a statement as to whether the body's going to come back into open session. Okay? And that's really just for the convenience of the public, that last part. Should we stick around, or shouldn't we? Is there a requirement that executive session be held at any particular time during a meeting? No. It can be held at the beginning, middle, or end of the meeting, that's up to the body entirely. And, executive session is something that people have asked a lot about, does that go in the meeting notice? If you know you're going to hold an executive session, yes. It may happen during a meeting that, let's say you were going to talk about acquiring a piece of property, and all of a sudden, you realize, you know, "I didn't anticipate that we would want to talk about this in executive session, but we've got some information that makes that important, you could go into executive session." It's the same standard, essentially, as what would be applicable to whether you can talk about something at a meeting. Okay, once you're in executive session, you have to limit yourself to the matter stated in the meeting notice, unless there was a matter that wasn't reasonably anticipated by the chair, and that was included in the vote. That's standard, that's what it was like before too. If you're going into executive session for two purposes, you can state both purposes, you don't have to go into executive session and come back out. The AG has said you can't talk about things that go beyond. I'm wanting, I'm not going to go through every one of these exemptions because they're there, and they just are what they are, and the AG's booklet covers them as well. But, a few things to know is, one, if you are going to use executive session, that is the board's option. The Board of Selectmen or another board can't be required to go into executive session. That's the board's option. If the board wants to go into executive session, it can. If it's to discuss the personal rights of an individual, the individual has the right to ask for that session, or to demand that that session be held in the public, to be held in open session. But, it's, like, a property owner can't say, "I demand you go into executive session to discuss my property, how dare you do that in open session?" No, that's not how it works. It's up to the public body. And the public body can decide, you know what? We don't, we're, we're not going to be negotiating with this person behind the scenes, you know, the town, we want all discussions about property X to take place in open session, that's up to the public body. Okay? If it's under exemption one, one of the new things here is that there's a new requirement, or a new, a new right provided to individuals, that they have the right to record that session. That right to record never existed. We recommend that if an individual is creating a record of the executive session, that the board or committee should create a record of the executive session. Generally, we don't recommend that executive sessions be taped or recorded, but if the individual's going to record, town should record. Can you talk about a person in open session? Yes. And if you do talk about a person in open session, do you have to give them personal notice of the meeting? No. It's only if you're going into executive session that you're required to give the personal notice. So let's say there's a problem with somebody, and the board says, "You know, we're going to have this meeting in open session, and just put that on the agenda," and the person looks at it, and they says, "Oh my God, you know, I didn't get notice of this personally." You're not required to. Open session, no personal notice required. The Attorney General has said that open meeting law complaints can be discussed in executive session under exemption one because they're complaints against individuals. Doesn't mean that you necessarily want to, but that's what the AG says. Okay? Just wanted to bring that up. All right, there's a few exemptions, three, six, and, I know there's one more, I can't remember it offhand, that require that the chair make a declaration of, a declaration that meeting in executive session, and, I'm sorry, meeting in open session would be detrimental to the public body's position. That used to be in just one, one exemption, I think, and now it's in three. If you go into executive session under exemptions three or six, so three is to discuss litigation, or, or negotiations with non-union personnel, I'm sorry, or strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, or under six to discuss the value of real property, you can't invite the other side in. And that makes sense. You're going in because, you're going into executive session because if you had an open session discussion, it's going to disadvantage the municipality. So you can't go into executive session with the entity that you would be disadvantaged against, or in comparison to. Okay. Let's see. Let's go all the way up to minutes. So let's just keep going, keep going. Okay. Minutes have to include the time, date, place, members present and absent, and a summary of the discussion on each subject. Under the old open meeting law, it was good enough to say, let's just pretend it was an open meeting law seminar, and the seminar was required to be at a meeting, it would have been good enough to say, Lauren Goldberg presented a summary of discussion on the open meeting law. That would have been that, that was minutes. Now it would have to say, Lauren Goldberg discussed the subjects of meeting minutes, meeting notices, blah, 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 and blah, 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 so-and-so asked a question about this, and so-and-so asked a question about that. Why is that problematic, in my view? Because have you ever been to a meeting where the board members talk for a really long time about what each member said, and why it isn't given enough credit or substance in the minutes? It can really be hard to prepare minutes that accurately reflect each person's view of that meeting. So, my recommendation is try not to get too hung up on the he-said, she-said aspect of the minutes, and focus more on whether the substance accurately reflects the discussion. Sometimes a minute taker, for whatever reason, is more focused on what one person says than another. Doesn't mean that the minutes are wrong, just that way that person interpreted them. Okay. Decisions made and actions taken, if you take a vote, it has to be recorded. The other thing that the open meeting law did, oh, your charter says if you take a vote, it can, and it's unanimous, it can be recorded as unanimous, even if it's a roll-call requirement. I still recommend under the open meeting law that you list out each person's vote. Okay? And if it's by remote participation, I recommend that you do that as well. Charter says that, but I still would recommend that you do it. It's back to you, John. Okay. There's also a requirement under the open meeting law that a list of documents and exhibits used by the body be essentially part of the public record. The list doesn't become, like, the documents and records don't become part of the minutes, it's just the list references them. Okay? And there's new requirements under the public records retention schedule for open meeting law-related records. I'm not going to go into it, it's in the law, I can give you a link to it, but they require that certain things be kept for a certain amount of time. So, a transcript is not required, and that's, I say, you don't have to have, he said this and she said, you can just leave it, John, it's, we're not there. He said this, and she said that, and you don't have to do that, but it would be a general summary, and if a particular person weighed in on a particular issue, and it was substantive, you would note that. Let me just say, and I, I know I probably shouldn't have to say this, but if people act badly at a public meeting, it doesn't need to be recorded in the minutes. And I know that sounds goofy, but I once had to defend a board that had had a fight at a meeting, and the minute taker recorded each thing that each person said, and when I went to court, the judge basically looked at me and said, "How am I supposed to take what they said, what they did, the decision they made seriously? How am I supposed to do that, when this is what's going on there?" So, and there was swearing that was recorded in there? That's really not what the minutes are about. It could say, "The members strongly disagreed about thing X, and Selectman one said this, or Selectman..." But it doesn't need to be a word-for-word. Yes?
I, I'm, Bruce, you're on the planning board, I've done minutes for the planning board occasionally. Sometimes I'll write "after discussion."
Yeah.
Rather than get into all that crap.
Yes.
You know, I'll just say "after discussion," that way you don't have the verbal word, that's okay?
Yes. That can be used, again, I think, under the old open meeting law, I would say that would be good enough. After discussion of, you know, building requirements and zone X, the planning board voted blah, 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 blah. Now it would have to say, "After discussing the following building requirements, blah, 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 there was a vote to approve whatever." It would also say something like, "Planning board member X expressed a strong belief that Y, planning board Y expressed a strong belief about Z." So you'd have to have something more than just after discussion, but it doesn't have to be, "And so-and-so said this, and so-and-so said that, and then this one responded in that, and that." Okay? So, a summary, not a, not a transcript. Okay. Executive session minutes are subject to the same rules as open session minutes. So, your executive session minutes also should include a substantive discussion about what happened at the meeting. That being said, it may be that you're, you can go back. It may be that you don't ever, that the, the minutes never become public, subject to disclosure. And that's okay. The minutes are still supposed to have that kind of detail, and the AG has made that very clear. All right. Section 7-10-3 of your town charter requires minutes to be approved within sixty days, sixty days of the meeting, or the conclusion. Interestingly, there's nothing in the open meeting law about that. So really, that's a charter requirement. That same section of the charter says that minutes are a public record, it must be available in places convenient to the public at all reasonable times. It's this one. It doesn't change the public records law. The public records law says, any person has the right to make a request for records, and they have to be provided within 10 days. Or, if they're not provided within 10 days, some sort of response has to be provided, either an estimate, if it costs more than $10, a denial if it's not going to be provided, or some combination of the three. Okay? That charter doesn't change that. Copies of minutes are also required to be filed in the town library. Now, it's not required under state law, but that's what your charter says. Okay, so, the next slide is essentially saying, executive session minutes also have to have detail, we'll go to the next one. If a number of documents are used at the meeting, they're supposed to be listed, how do you know what's used? The document is physically present, it's verbally identified, and it's discussed. A passing reference to a document doesn't mean it's used by the public body. So if I say to you something like, "Supplement," there's a supplement to the AG's open meeting law booklet, and you can find it by going to the AG's website, it doesn't make that supplement all of a sudden part of the meeting minutes, nor does it mean it has to be listed. But if we get that supplement out, and we all take a look at it, and we talk about it, and there's questions asked about it, now it's been used at the meeting. Okay? This is actually a relatively practical test, I think. If you actually use it, if you actually talk about it, and it's subject of discussion, it should be listed. Okay. Open meeting minutes. The law says, "Open session meeting minutes shall not be withheld under any exemptions to the public records law, except that the certain information listed is personnel information." And that is true, although sometimes there's stuff, that's my very legal term, in open meeting minutes that really shouldn't be there in the first place, and so I still wouldn't recommend disclosing that under the circumstances. For example, if someone's personal medical information is inadvertently included in meeting minutes, discussed at a meeting, and included in the meeting minutes, I wouldn't recommend that that information be further disclosed. Let somebody like the supervisor of public records, or the attorney general, say, "You are required to disclose that." Because that protects us against an invasion, protects the town against an invasion of privacy claim. It shouldn't have been discussed at an open meeting anyway, and it shouldn't have been in the minutes. So, you know, take care when you're drafting your minutes. But generally, open session meeting minutes are public records in their entirety as of the moment of their creation. It means that draft open meeting minutes, you know, that the clerk of the body takes, or the minute taker takes, are subject to disclosure, even if they're just a draft. How do you protect yourself in that instance? Write the word "draft" in red or something across the top of the minutes, so that everybody knows that's a draft. Hasn't been approved by the board, they may not look like that by the time that the minutes are actually approved. Okay. Let's see, the next thing to be thinking about is, executive session minutes are required to be disclosed when the purpose of the exemption has been met. But the new thing that was added was, unless the information is otherwise protected under the open meeting law, I mean, under the public records law. And that's really good news for people that are discussed in an executive session. Because if, let's say, someone's discussed in an executive session to determine whether they are income-eligible for affordable housing that the town is providing access to. Really, you never want to have to disclose that information about that person's income eligibility. It's really a private matter. So, the open meeting law now would allow you to, even though the minutes might become quote-unquote "public" under the law, you could still assert the application of an exemption if you believe that one reasonably applies. So that's, that's a good development. The second thing is that, the open meeting law now says that the chair should periodically review executive session minutes to determine whether they are releasable. Our position is still that the public body needs to make that decision. How do you make a decision about executive session minutes, whether the purpose of the law still applies? You put on the meeting notice the original purpose you were in executive session, and as your topic, you say, "Review executive session minutes of whatever date to determine whether application of exemption is still applicable." Something like that. So you go back in under the same exemption you were in originally. You're supposed to provide a response, same as under the public records law, within 10 days in response to a request for those minutes, either by giving them, or by claiming that they're exempt, or by deny, by giving a part of them, or by giving a, an estimate. Except that, if the board hasn't had a chance to do this periodic review, they have 30 days or till their next meeting, whichever is first, to respond to the request for executive session minutes. Okay. The complaint process. Have to file a complaint first with the, with the public body. It used to be you went directly to the AG, and then, the AG would, or to the DA. Then the DA would contact either town council, or the chair of the board, or the town manager, and say, "Look, we've got this complaint, how do you guys want to resolve this?" So now it's been codified. The complaint has to be filed with the public body, it has to be on a form prescribed by the Attorney General. Has to be filed within 30 days of the violation. The public body forwards that to the, has to act on that, and forward it to the AG within 14 business days of receipt, and inform the AG of any remedial action taken, if any is taken. And then, the individual has not less than 30 days after the date of the complaint to file that complaint with the AG. Essentially saying, "Yeah, the public body said it was going to do this, but that wasn't good enough for me." The public body is supposed to consider the complaint at a public meeting. I'm sorry, at a properly posted meeting. As I said earlier, the body can go into executive session and discuss it under exemption one, if the public body wants to. They acknowledge receipt of the complaint, they should deliberate about the allegations and a possible resolution, vote on a method to resolve it, and if appropriate, authorize a response to be prepared and sent to the AG and the complainant. So sometimes, a board will vote to authorize town council to take action consistent with its vote. Sometimes, a public body will resolve something on its vote, sometimes a public body will resolve something on its own. What can, what could a public body do to resolve an open meeting law complaint or to fix a potential violation? One, make the minutes of an improperly called or held executive session public. Same thing, make minutes of an improperly called or held meeting public. So if you had a meeting that was not held within 48 hours after a posting as calculated under the open meeting law, you could make the minutes of that meeting public, you could incorporate them into the minutes of the next meeting, you would essentially revisit that matter by publicly deliberating and voting on it. What if you had a meeting where the minutes weren't accurate or weren't accurately detailed enough? You'd supplement those minutes, that would be a way to resolve a violation. So those are the types of things that a public body can do. What if the public body can't act within the statutory timeframe, the 14 business days? Maybe there's an intervening holiday, maybe members of the board will be away, maybe the facts need to be researched before an appropriate response can be crafted, you can request an extension from the AG, and they're relatively good about approving those if they're timely made. One of the issues that we've basically been talking about is this notion of cure. If you discover that you violated the open meeting law as a public body inadvertently, let's say someone did do that when the agenda went out, they responded to all by saying, great agenda, we really need to get to these things, and the chair says, oh my goodness, that's a violation of the open meeting law. The chair could literally put an item on the next agenda that says, address, you know, inadvertent violation by email, date, or whatever, which email is attached to this agenda, there'd be discussion, you know, conservation commission member X or selectman Y sent this email saying, great agenda, let's resolve this, you know, let's take action on this once and for all. You know, I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention that that happened, and that's actually what we're going to talk about tonight, and then there'd be a discussion. That's a cure of a violation. So that's consistent with earlier case law, and the AG has said that that still applies. What does the Attorney General do if a complaint is filed directly with the Attorney General after this local period goes through, the AG, I mean, this local process is followed? The AG has to determine if a violation exists, and if they want to impose a civil penalty, then they have to, can go to the next one, they have to hold a hearing, and if they find a violation, they determine whether it's the body itself or one or more members, and then they look to see whether it was intentional. So this, the next slide is just an example of, of a time when the AG found that they cured the problem by raising it by themselves at the next meeting, explaining it, and then they actually put it on the, it had come up kind of after the agenda had been addressed, so they put it on the next agenda to talk about it at a future time, and the AG said, that's perfect, that's just what you should do. The question that was asked earlier, what can the AG do? The AG can issue an order to compel immediate and future compliance. Oh yeah, they can require attendance at a training session like this, and I've actually given one of those. They have to approve the person that's going to give the training session. They can nullify the action taken at a meeting. That is huge. Under the old version of the law, only a court could do that. Now the AG can nullify. They can impose the civil penalty for intentional violations. This is also huge. They can reinstate an employee without loss of compensation, seniority tenure, or other benefits if they are let go in violation of the open meeting law. They can compel that minutes, records, or other materials be made public, or they can prescribe other appropriate action. What does this mean to you? The AG has a lot of authority, that's what that means.
Who gives the key to the money?
The $1,000 penalty goes to the state. Judicial review of an AG order. The public body or any member that's aggrieved by a decision can, within 20 days, 21 days of receipt, file in superior court for review of that. I just, it's an uphill battle, just like it is with any agency decision, to get an order overturned. The AG's order is stayed pending judicial review, except that if an AG's order nullifies action, the public body can't implement it. So essentially, it's trying to just retain the status quo. So as I said, the AG can file an action in superior court to compel compliance with an order or payment of a civil penalty, or three or more registered voters can do that. And just in case it was up for grabs, it's three or more registered voters of the town. Now, it doesn't actually say that, but that's the way it's been interpreted. And that brings us to the end. I do want to tell you that I sent to Dori, and I'm, and she can post or send along to whatever, some memoranda that our office has prepared about complying with the open meeting law, and for your perspect, from your perspective, most important is probably the one I'm preparing, your meeting notice. And, I don't know, did you print those?
There's hard copies of those, too.
Yeah, so there's hard copies of those, too.
We also have them on the P drive for department heads who can issue them to their boards and committees. Everything's, everything here today is on the P drive.
Yep.
In electronic form.
The AG's guide is very good, and has a lot of, in that it's very detailed, and it has a lot of examples. They do FAQs, and so if anything's kind of come up over and over again that they feel hasn't been addressed in enough detail in their general guide, then they'll, they'll issue an FAQ about it. So keep an eye out for those. Their website is excellent, they have a lot of information, so there's that. And the public records retention issues that I was talking about, can get that on the public records website, which is the Secretary of State's website, which I also have a link to, a link for. So you can get that there, and it's under, it's, now it's called the statewide municipal retention schedule. I think it used to be a records disposal schedule, and it was mostly by department. The one, there is still one that's applicable to all departments, it's records in common, and that's part of that schedule, and that's where you'll find the open meeting law stuff. Before we just take concluding questions, I just, I want to reiterate that. My experience with the open meeting law has been that boards and committees make huge efforts to comply with all of these requirements, and that, and I really do feel that municipal officials have just been given a huge burden in terms of figuring out how to comply with these, these new requirements. That being said, as we're getting more and more used to it, I think people are doing a better and better job at meeting those requirements. And, you know, there's going to be a learning curve. The open meeting law is the way it was for 30-plus years, and, you know, we've only, we're only like a year and a half into this, and the AG's office really didn't start issuing its formal findings on a regular basis until relatively recently. They have four attorneys or something in their office, so they have a lot of work to do. And I was at a meeting over the weekend where they said that they got something like 2,400 questions, 2,400 phone calls over the past year, and that's a lot for four people to respond to. So they do try to deal with the complaints that are filed in a timely way, and they will answer your questions if you call. Just remember that they're both a, a group that's trying to help you comply with law, but they're also an enforcement authority, so you need to keep that in mind when you call. All right, final question. Sean.
I have two questions. The law's clear about how to post a meeting and what notice you have. What happens in the event that you have to cancel either a meeting or cancel a hearing? What should you do?
That's a good question. There is nothing in the law about that, so, you know, it's just not there. Essentially, if you need to cancel a meeting, you should just notify the clerk's office, and they should post that cancellation in both places. As a matter of convenience, if it's close to the time when the meeting's going to be held, so for example, sometimes you might post a meeting a week ahead, and you might find out six days ahead that the meeting's canceled. So you put that on the web, and you put that in the clerk's office, and that's probably good enough. But if it's the day of the meeting, you might want to also put a meeting, a notice on the building door and the meeting room door in case anyone shows up and doesn't know.
The second question was, you just kind of addressed it. Pretty much everyone who's on the board or committee is a volunteer, and we're all trying to learn what to do. How, what's the relationship with the volunteers and town council, and what, have you had any experience yet with harassing type of complaints, repetitive complaints, even those of no merit that the board has to keep addressing? What's a board to do or a town to do about that?
With respect to access to town council that comes through to town manager. So, that's how that's worked. In terms of repetitive complaints, there's nothing in the law that says that just because a complaint has no merit, it doesn't have to be dealt with. So it should still go on a meeting notice, and then there should still be a vote, and there should still be a response. I do think the AG recognizes when they're getting complaints from the same people over and over, and, you know, that has to factor into how they, they resolve things, but I can't speak for them.
Are they anonymous?
Complaints?
Yeah. Like an ethics complaint, I know is the, the complaint's name is kept anonymous, for an open meeting law complaint, it's usually not.
Correct. Open meeting law complaints are not anonymous. The form that's required by the AG has a place for the complainant to sign their name and put their address down, and also give the reason for the specific, what they think is a violation, and the remedy that they would like to see. So it's not anonymous. They're public records. Yes, sir? You?
Question regarding the difference between a public hearing and public meeting. Does the open meeting law apply to either one of the meetings within a meeting? I guess, what, I have my question.
Yes. The open meeting law applies to every meeting of a governmental body. Okay? So anytime a governmental body has a meeting, they have to post. So anytime there's going to be a quorum present for the purpose of taking action on any matter within its jurisdiction, it posts a meeting. There may also be at those meetings, public hearings. And for public hearings, those are required by some other law. So the requirements of that other law would also need to be met. I'll just take zoning, for example, like a zoning bylaw. It's required that the planning board have a public hearing on the adoption of a zoning bylaw, so that there may be notice that has to be provided under the zoning act to a butters, people within, a butters to a butters within 300 feet. Under the wetlands protection act, there might be people that have to get noticed because they're a quote-unquote "person in interest." Whatever those other laws require in terms of notice of a public hearing, that's not the open meeting law. So you might have a meeting that's totally compliant with the open meeting law, that doesn't meet the requirements of other laws, and that's just not the open meeting law's business. Sean.
Earlier you mentioned something about audio, visual, and video recordings. If someone in the audience wants to do it, they have to inform the chair, and the chair has to announce it. What about cable TV? Should we be announcing that at the beginning of every meeting that, oh, by the way, you're being recorded?
I guess that doesn't hurt. I mean, I think that when cable TV is making a recording, usually people know what meetings are being recorded and what don't, what, what meetings aren't, but, but sure, there's no harm in making an announcement that the meeting's being recorded by cable television. I mean, some towns, and I know that you all passed a bylaw that says, to the extent possible, technologically possible meetings should be recorded, so there is public notice of that, but certainly that could be announced as well. Well, thank you all, I appreciate your attention. I know we were here for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative. We're finished, except for a public comment. I don't know if there's any public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just, I just wanted to inform the board that we're starting our department head budget meetings Monday, and we're going to run straight through to February 11th. We're going to be looking at our budgets on a line item basis and starting to begin the, the process of paring that, that budget down. We do expect to have revenue numbers by March. After we receive the February revenue report, we'll, we'll have a full quarter, and we can be able to project out what our revenue will be for the end of the fiscal year. I know there's been some talk about trying to submit a balanced budget now. We could do that, but we would look at numbers that may or may not come to fruition as far as revenue to expenditures. We, we could cut two and a half million from the school budget, and half million or 700,000 from the town, and we may not need to do that, you know, but, you know, that's obviously going to be up to the board as to how they want, want me to proceed with that. If you want me to do that, I can do it, submit a balanced budget, and we can be all set in a matter of days, but that's not realistic.
We'll talk about the budget at our next meeting anyway, so that's, that's fine. Anything else? If not, we have a public comment, sir? Yes?
Question, I'm, I'm able to go.
Can you just come up to the microphone, please?
That's our animal control officer.
How are you?
Yeah. I'm the ball, well. Concern I have is about Mr. and Mrs. Tom Turkey down the end of the road here. I'm getting complaints on it, and I believe it's a liability to town if we don't do something about it and it causes an accident, we may be liable for a suit. I talked to Nancy a little bit about it, and I just figured, contact the game wardens and see if they can remove them. I know they're a sight down there, but they are in the middle of the road all the time.
They are. I pass by them every day, drop my kids off to school, so.
You know, it's just that, what does a town stand as a liability if we don't do anything? We know there's a problem there.
I would ask you to work with John on that, if that's, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Tom Turkey. We'll talk turkey about that.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.